It's 11:00 AM by my watch, so I will commence this May 23, 2019, meeting of the Carson City Library Board of Trustees. We will now proceed with the roll call.
Chairperson Hayes.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Long.
Here.
Trustee Cranston.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Solinger.
Here.
O'Quams present.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item two, public comment. If any members of the public wish to address the Library Board of Trustees, now would be the time. Seeing none forthcoming, we'll move to item three, discussion and possible action regarding the selection of a new library director. I believe that these interviews will begin with Cynthia Oh. All right. Good morning. If you could please state your name just for the record?
Cindy Oh.
All right. So just to give you a little bit of the logistics for how this is going to go, we have a number of questions. We're going to start down on my right, your left, and we're going to move over to the my left, your right, and then we'll take another pass.
Great.
And with that, I will hand it off to Ms. Solinger.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have the first question. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I have to look down to read this. Tell us about your experience as it relates to this position and why you are interested in Carson City's library director position.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, good question. Thank you. So my interest and capability in this position, in a director position, goes back several years. I've been the director of the Nevada Library Cooperative for the last year and a half, and before that, I was the director of a county library for two years, part of that, director of a city library for four years. So I've got that number of years of experience. Directorship really appeals to me in that I find it incredibly humbling and fulfilling to be in a position of authority where I can also work with a staff and work with the individuals, and you know, help them develop professionally and personally and kind of be empowered and reach their fullest potential. That's where I get my fulfillment from. And what interests me very much about Carson City Library is, you know, I've had the opportunity to be involved with and work with the library since I've been in Nevada for the past three and a half years in different capacities, and Carson City Library does incredible things. You know, being a National Medal finalist is just indicative of the level of programming and services and what this library is doing. It's certainly a library leader in the state, and it's exciting to see what else can come out of this library. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So lead us through your decision-making process on a difficult problem that you've worked on.
Ooh, yeah, making decisions. Before my director time, I kind of had an aversion to making decisions, especially on behalf of other people and other entities, but you know, again, it is a privilege and an honor to be in a position to be able to do that, and I certainly always approach decisions from the perspective of what is best for the library and what's best for the community. So I always attempt to look at the problem through that lens, and I recognize and acknowledge that I tend to wear rose-colored glasses. So looking at a, you know, potential problem or issue and a decision that needs to be made from the optimistic point of view, from a more pessimistic point of view, anticipating any problems or, you know, backlash or unanticipated things that might come out of that decision, looking at it from the monetary standpoint, from the effect that it would have on staff, on the community. There are so many angles that need to be considered, and I definitely try to, as objectively as I can, look at all of those, and, you know, again, always going back to what's best for the library and the community, if that answers the question.
So tell us about a time when you developed a viable strategy but encountered a roadblock and had to adjust your plan.
Good question. So whenever, if I can kind of just talk to my philosophy and approach of doing something like that, looking at a plan or a strategy to move forward, again, it's always going to be in the light of what's best for the library and the community, and acknowledging that any assumptions that I may be operating under are not the same assumptions that the other people involved are going to be operating under. So really looking at those and addressing them in a very open, practical, direct manner, clear as kind, in the words of Renee Brown. So, you know, acknowledging that the process is going to take time, and we all need to be patient and gentle with ourselves as we move forward, and making sure that we've got a very clearly developed kind of stepping stone process of how to move forward in that regard, whatever we're trying to implement, I think is ideal. So I can give you an example of me not doing that process, and hence, this is what I've learned from it. I wanted to implement some new procedures for how to handle customer use of the public computers, and one of the assumptions that I had was that the other staff members were interested in facilitating the same interactions within the library that I was, essentially, you know, selfless, public service, coming from a place of yes rather than a place of no. So I kind of came in and just said, okay, we're going to change what we're doing from this to this. And it did not go very smoothly. You know, things that I didn't address were why we were doing that, how I wanted to implement that, what I expected the outcomes to be, and if there was any training that was lacking that would facilitate that on the staff side. So, you know, our mistakes are our biggest learning opportunities, and that's certainly one of them. So if that answers the question.
Are you going to ask? Okay. Cindy, describe your strategy for informing customers, bosses, peers, and people who report directly to you.
On, okay, yeah, so certainly. So I am a huge fan of staff meetings, very regular, consistent staff meetings with the entire staff, and then also one-on-one meetings with each member individually. I think that's very important because you can kind of, you can convey your message to the entire team, but as much of an open-door policy and encouraging communication that we can be, some folks just don't quite feel comfortable yet speaking out in a group. So the one-on-ones give another opportunity to have more of a, more of a direct, you know, open conversation that's not quite as intimidating. So one-on-ones, staff meetings, I'm a big fan of keeping the local municipality leadership in the loop on anything that the library is thinking about doing or planning on doing. I understand the value and importance of making sure that all of our stakeholders are aware and on board, or at least understand the value and the intention behind what we're trying to do. Communicating with the public is critical. I really like the idea of having maybe a once-a-month meet and greet, or, you know, coffee and donuts with the library director just at the library, and just an opportunity, open forum, to have community members ask questions of the director, or that forum to, you know, float potential ideas out to the group and solicit feedback kind of informally that way. Newspaper articles are important, I think, and on the same token, all the social media avenues are important as well. We know different folks appreciate different modes of communication, and we want to make sure and hit all of those for sure. So I think that's it. Email is useful as well.
Sounds like you've hit everybody. So thank you.
That's definitely the intent. We want to keep everybody in the loop. Yeah.
Thank you.
Could you compare and contrast examples of times you've been effective or ineffective in a political situation?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one. I used to, I used to feel that libraries were apolitical, and I kind of had an aversion to politics, but I've certainly come to understand that although the library isn't necessarily political in itself, you know, we strive to provide, you know, open access to all viewpoints and provide services to everybody regardless of socioeconomic status, et cetera, et cetera. Politics are at play in our municipalities and in our communities, and it's important to be aware of that and to kind of meet that situation where it is and as it is. So I think politics can color our priorities, and it's useful to be able to match up what the library can do with the priorities of whoever you're talking to. Because I think there's always, there's always room for collaboration and partnership and understanding regardless of politics. And I think as far as navigating politics in a positive way, at one of my previous libraries, it was a very, it was a very conservative, small community, and there were certainly deeply ingrained ideas about how things should be, and I was able to meet with the city councilmen and really talk with them and understand what their priorities were for the community, what their values were, and kind of marry that up with what the library can do, and we were very successful together. We were able to do a lot of creative, innovative projects, partnering with different agencies within the city government, and also with the different city council members, kind of advocating for these projects on the library's behalf. So it was awesome. An example of where I did not navigate politics well was when we needed to do some concrete repair work on the library property, and there had been one individual who had done the concrete work at that library for years and years, but I discovered that there were other options in the community that were less expensive. And, you know, again, coming from the place of the what's best for the library and the community, one of those aspects is being a very diligent steward of taxpayer dollars. So I couldn't in good conscience hire the person who had been doing it forever but cost more than double than this other individual that could do it for, you know, same quality work but less expensive. And what I didn't realize or even think about was the personal and political connections of the one person to other key members in the community, and there was, there was, there were some unhappy folks, and I think it bled over into what we were able to accomplish in the library. Fair or unfair, but that's how it was, and, but again, really valuable learning experience.
So is this natural for you or something that you have to dig for?
Library directorship?
The political, the political situations.
You know, I, I wouldn't call it natural, only because of my, you know, years ago aversion to it, but I've certainly made a lot of progress in simply acknowledging what is, you know, the reality of the situation, and, you know, instead of fighting against something, you want to, you want to dive in and leverage it as you can, and ideally to the benefit of all the parties involved. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a fun skill to look at and develop, really. I'm, I can assure you, I'm not averse to it anymore.
Thank you.
How do you get results, build team spirit, and not burnout people all at the same time?
Right. So results, team spirit, no burnout. So I think it's very important to be as clear and direct with expectations as possible. Again, clear as kind, and articulating right up front what my expectations are, what the board's expectations are, and making sure that the, that the library team understands that. I'm a big fan of the why behind what we're doing. I think that helps people understand whatever it is we're doing in, you know, an applicable frame and context, so it's not just because. Getting, getting feedback and input on not the end results, but the best, the best way that the team thinks we can get there, you know, strategies for, and tactics for doing that. I like when the team feels empowered enough to, to take on and own issues or problems or projects and, and then come up with their own solutions for them. So that's really exciting to see. Having that common, that common end game result, and, you know, getting everybody involved, building that sense of ownership around it, I think does a ton for team spirit. And I do think that's one of the critical aspects of any well-functioning library, is that solid, you know, team cohesion and feeling like they're, they're a part of something bigger than themselves, and dare I say, even that it's not just a job, but that it's almost a calling, you know, being a public servant. So it's really exciting to see a team come together around those common goals, and as far as burnout, yeah. So acknowledging that my tendency to want to make a decision and then get it done isn't necessarily comfortable for everybody. So, you know, really respecting the planning process, detailing out very clearly the steps that we'll be taking to accomplish the goal, and just carefully and deliberately moving forward, and, you know, regular temperature-taking to make sure that everybody still feels good, has any concerns that ever risen since we last discussed it, and, yeah, going back to communication, I think, is critical. Thank you.
Tell us about a time when you felt pulled in an opposite or different directions on a value or ethics issue.
That's a good one. Good question. Yeah, I think in the role of the director, my, my primary goal is to do what's best for the library and the community, and if, if any situation comes up that I feel we're, we're being pulled to do something other than what's best for the library, it's, it's difficult. It's difficult for me to reconcile something like that. And I think, you know, going, going back to the concrete work and choosing the lesser expensive option of the two, even if I had known, I think the political and personal ramifications of that decision, I still would have made it. I don't think, you know, values-wise, I could have, in good conscience, made the decision otherwise, but I would have made the effort to go and make the rounds with all the folks that I knew were going to be affected or concerned by that decision. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely a delicate dance. We, we want to stick with our values and our ethics and, you know, remain good stewards of taxpayer dollars, do what's best for our library, and as, as delicately and gently as we can, convey those intents to any and all of the other folks that are going to be involved with that decision or be impacted by that decision, if that, if that answers the question. Thank you.
All right, back to me again. Have you ever had to be a champion for people not like you?
For people not like me? Well, at the risk of taking a little bit of a woo-woo approach to this, yes, absolutely, because nobody's like me, right? Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's really important to acknowledge that the assumptions that I have aren't the assumptions that everybody else has. The way that I look at things and approach things are going to be different than everybody else. We all have our own expectations and ideas about what's right, what's best, and acknowledging our uniqueness and individuality, I think, just consciously, goes a long way to opening up communication and dialogue and productive partnerships moving forward. So, yeah, I think, I think ultimately, we want to be positive, productive, empowering advocates for, for anybody under our purview. So, you know, the, the library team in the library, trustees, the, the community itself as far as advocating on, you know, a broader scale statewide or nationwide, and honoring, honoring the differences, I think can, can take us pretty far.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
What is your vision of a public library's purpose and role in society?
Oh, empowering people. Yeah, um, public libraries are, and all libraries are just the most amazing, valuable, life-changing institutions that we have, and it's just so cool to be a part of that, to be able to, to develop programs and develop collections and services and, you know, promote these things and make them available to the community members. And, I mean, we really are literally changing people's lives for the better and empowering folks, and, yeah, it's, it's an honor. It's humbling. You know what? Can I, if I can follow up on myself? So that said, there's also some more practical applications to what the library does, right? So, you know, education leads to more engagement in the community itself. It also leads to more civic engagement and, you know, increased workforce development. So the library really is a critical foundational piece of a strong, vibrant economy and a strong, vibrant community. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us, or do you want to bring up anything that didn't come up during the interview?
I would love, I would love to ask some questions. Okay. If you'll forgive me, I put them on my phone, in my little, my little notes app. So I'm, I'm really interested in what brought you guys to be library board members and what And what you see as different aspects of your role as trustees?
I'll go first. I've been a volunteer librarian in schools for over 26 years in the schools that my children went to. I think in another life I was a librarian, seriously. And I lived in libraries as a child. I was recruited for this by the Librarian of Carson Middle School. So that's how I ended up here. And we get to make decisions that affect Carson City Library.
What an honor, right?
Very good question. I, my kids were young, so I've been on the board a couple of years now. And my kids use the library a lot, and I had a friend who worked at the library as well. And I, you know, I'm always looking for opportunities in the community in Carson City to be involved and to help make it a better community. And I've been involved in a lot of different projects. And so this was one that really intrigued me because I think it's, you know, working from the ground up. It's providing resources to community members and kids and just helping develop that education and empowering people. I really like that. You know, you said that because I think that resonates with me as far as, you know, providing people with the opportunities that maybe they don't always have in their life. And I think that the library is really good at providing those tools.
Yeah. Opens up the whole world.
So, I was really heavily involved with my high school's library and my university library thereafter, down in Las Vegas. When I moved up here, I became fast friends with one of the librarians that's no longer with us. He's moved on to Phoenix, I believe. And when he moved on, I couldn't imagine, you know, leaving the board because of that because I've, I've come to know all these people and, you know, I appreciate the work that they do to such a great extent. Insofar as my role, you know, I, I just want to advocate for what the library wants to do in meeting the goals that, you know, a lot of what you've talked about, being an advocate for the community and everything like that. And I, I just want to facilitate that to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
I am an avid book lover. It's what started me here. But I have been, I've been here since 1996 and seen two, maybe three bond measures fail in this community. So I wanted to be an advocate for libraries. I wanted to work with the library to educate the community on how valuable a library is. And it just, I loved your word empowering the community because that's exactly what a library does. It's open to everybody. It can improve their education. It can improve their knowledge of other cultures, other religions. It can just satisfy their curiosity about how things work or where things are. Or just entertain them by reading fiction and watching movies and listening to music. It's a wide-open, the only place in town that's open to everybody with no cost. And I will be here as long as I can.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a small background in education. I was originally going to try to be a teacher, but I ended up going into the Air Force instead. And then when I got out, I still wanted to help with education. So this was a way for me to do that. And then it's also, for me, it's a large part of civic duty. I feel like, you know, this is an area where people can, local government is an area where people can step in and help shape what they would like to see. So that's one of the main reasons I ended up coming in here, actually.
Awesome. Can I ask what your AFSC was?
It is 3DO X2. I'm still in the reserves.
Oh, nice.
I was actually going to ask you, how'd you go from Air Force to library?
Right, yeah, it seems kind of weird. So when, I was a 1NO in the Air Force, so that's an intel analyst. And depending on where I went, the job differed a little bit. There was training air crew on missiles and airplanes and that kind of stuff. And then there was briefing commanders on current intel, which is like classified news. So when I distilled all that, I realized that I was really good at finding information from various sources and answering questions. So that sounded like a reference librarian to me. So, yeah, from there I got a job as a teen librarian and kind of worked up from there and just, I mean, immediately fell in love with it. So, yeah, it's been, it's, it's been a surprise and a pleasure and, and a calling. So, thank you for letting me ask that question. If you'll indulge me in, in a few more. I know that Carson City Library got the LSTA grant to do the strategic planning process or project. How does the board feel that process has been going? And what are the top priorities that have emerged from that?
Diane Baker, for the record, I may be the right one to at least start any comments out. So we have just, we have completed the contract with our consultant from the University Center for Economic Development. The final draft of the report is due to the board and is on the next regular meeting agenda, which is May 30th. So they are still just getting that information on that part. There have been some impressions and individuals, they've been apprised of the, where we've been with different things. But, so that's a point of information for where we're at. And I'll let anyone comment after.
I can, I can comment. We don't have the report yet, so we don't know all the outcomes and topics. But I think that, for me personally, I think strategic planning is super important. And it helps us up here see the big picture and kind of see where we're, where we're going, how we're going to get there. And I'm a systems process person in addition to, you know, business. So for me, that's like a really big part of what, you know, as a board member, that I can see how we can support the library. It just gives me a better, it puts me in tune with what's going on and, and how to kind of measure that and see how things, you know, fall into place.
Yeah, yeah.
I was a part of one of the panels that worked with a consultant on it. So I think he did an excellent job. There was a lot of input from community members, other organizations in town. They did a lot of surveying and all that sort of stuff. So I think when we actually see the finished project, we're going to be very pleased with the direction that it's going to give us.
Great, great. So I'm curious about the board's impression of how the Adams Hub project has been going? And what's the board's long-term plan and expectation for that?
That's probably going to be me. I've been heavily involved with the Adams Hub. I was involved with Adams Hub prior to the board taking that over. I think that project and the community is super important to our local businesses. And I would really love to see that project continue to grow and flourish because it's, it's a missing piece that a lot of businesses in Carson City don't have access to. It's resources that they can help grow their business and create networking and connections with other businesses in the community. And so I think the library has a lot of resources that tie into that. And so I'd like to really just see that digress, like, just as a bigger, you know, a bigger project or a bigger collaboration than we are now. Because I feel like we're still sort of in the, in the starting phases of it. But I think it's a big piece of what we do as well.
Goes back to economic development, right? Workforce development?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'd like to echo what Amanda said. In my quote-unquote "real" job, I am an economist and I work with workforce development and things like that at the state level. And I, I love the work that we're doing and I, I can only hope that it's going to, you know, like you said, just keep growing and keep, you know, bringing and developing businesses that are within our community.
Lots of potential. So how would the board describe the relationship between the library and the municipality?
I think we've had a pretty good relationship with the, the city over the last few years. I do feel that there's more education of the community needed to see the real value of a library to this community.
Yes, and we just had an in-library survey that patrons could fill out. I think there were 236 responses or something like that. And that, those results were collated and their suggestions were also collated and are available for perusal. They had some excellent suggestions, both plus and minus. And I thought that was an excellent idea.
Yeah. I would, I would tend to agree that our goal in the library isn't necessarily to tell other people what they need, but to be responsive to what their perceived needs are. Cool, thank you. If, if we have time and if you're willing to indulge me, I'm interested in your perspective. How would you rank the willingness of the library staff to embrace change and why?
Well, recently they've seen a lot of change. And they've adapted pretty well, from my perspective. I mean, we have a lot of things going on and it was, you know, the library's always busy. There's always stuff going on. And I think as long as I've been on the board, they've not had a full staff that they really do need. But I think that they adapt really well to the changes. And it has been seamless, it feels like. Like it's, you know, when we think about people leaving and especially people in, you know, the director positions, that's a very big, those are very big shoes to fill and somebody has to absorb it. And it really, from my perspective, has been smooth sailing. So I think we have a great group of staff.
Awesome.
I'd like, I'd like to echo that because I actually volunteer in the library two hours a week. So I see it from the inside out. And it does run very smoothly. There's been a lot of staff overturn, but it has not affected the operations of the library, that I can tell. And I've been doing that for about four years now.
And then just to add, you know, kind of looking at a very specific example, I know that with the remodel that we did of the first floor, you know, kind of to echo what you were saying about keeping staff in the loop on the planning process and things like that. I think that that probably helped a lot with, you know, helping the staff to, you know, go with that change as opposed to railing against it. So, you know, those open lines of communication are definitely helpful with that.
Yeah, yeah, awesome, thank you. If, if I could extend that same question to the board and your perception of the municipal leaders in the community overall, willingness to embrace change?
So insofar as like the, let's say, the, the Board of Supervisors, they've definitely shown a willingness to embrace change insofar as, you know, us obtaining the Adams Hub. And, you know, they, they are the ones that we have to go to for, you know, funding and things like that. And, you know, the, the library is constantly changing and evolving. And, you know, we've been lucky that our relationship with them is such that, you know, they're, they're willing to fund a lot of those changes and, you know, accept the proposals that we give to them for the, for the most part.
Cool, thank you. So what would be, what would be the board's expectations of the new library director over the first six months?
I'll answer that. I, I think there should, the least disruptive thing would be to maintain the status quo for X amount of time, whatever both sides feel comfortable with, and then transition into any changes. Any abrupt changes are difficult to accept. That's just human nature. And to, to take time to assess the current situation and the needs of the library and triage them accordingly.
I would agree with that, too. I like that approach.
I, I would agree with that also. I think probably one of the first things is going to be to fill the empty spaces that we have in library staff. And then I think they'll, then you'll be all set to do whatever you want to do to soar higher and higher.
Thank you. So I do, we've talked about this already, I think. I, I am a true believer in staff professional development and personal empowerment as well as team building. I think those are critical. And I'm curious about the board's feeling about utilizing tools like climate surveys or staff skills assessments or that kind of thing, process evaluation.
I think we've done a few, just this last year even. And I, I, I think we, we all were excited to see the results from those surveys and the assessments because it, again, tells us, you know, where we need to improve, where maybe we need to focus some of our attention and provide more support. Or, you know, go to the Board of Supervisors for different needs and, and things coming up. So I've, I can't speak for everybody, but what I've seen being on this board, we've always been very, very open and happy to provide and support that, like, all the different things. Continuing education and, you know, assessments and all, all that great stuff.
To, to go off of that, you know, we, as the board, we approve opening and closing days and things like that. And built into that are a number of staff development days and things like that wherein a lot of professional development happens. And then I've approved quite a few, you know, different trips to conferences and things like that to, you know, again, just keep the, the professional development going. And I plan to continue to approve all of those because I, I think that it does really bring, you know, a lot back to the library when we send people out for that kind of training.
Yeah, I agree. So speaking of positions and filling positions, kind of periphery to that, I'm, I'm curious about the, the role of an assistant director and why, I know Diane serves as the business manager technically and also in a lot of capacities, assistant director. Is the, is the board interested or willing to support re-implementing a, a solid assistant director position? Or is that on the radar at all?
So I would always be willing to consider a proposal like that. I know that in the reorganization that we did some years ago, that position was, was it eliminated? Or Diane, you might be able to help me a little bit?
Yeah, Diane Baker, for the record. So it was the PONIFIX and, and related studies where it, it was not just the, the library. It was citywide. And they did come through and do interviews. I think the final reports came out a little, around four years or so ago. And they did recommend a rearrangement of management in the library. That was one of the assessments. And I believe their recommendations were implemented where they had a director and then four managers reporting. So that was all implemented just about four years ago, a little over, I guess. I don't know if that helps?
Yeah.
But like I said, I, um, if that's the way the, the chosen candidate wants to, um, organize their team and if they want to bring a proposal to the board for something like that, I'd be more than willing to consider it and I'm sure that the, the rest of the board would echo that.
Great, thank you. Um, and one la, one last and I really appreciate you, you indulging me. Um, I, I'm interested in how you would describe the organizational culture within the library?
Can you explain organizational culture to a civilian?
Um, yeah. Um, I would say probably, um, common values, um, that everybody works around and, um, for instance, our, our mistakes viewed, um, in a negative light, that need punishment or the opportunities for growth and, um, kind of the general, general internal vibe.
Speaking for the two hours that I'm there a week for four years, uh, I don't hear grumbling and complaining, I just see action. Um, so I can't speak for the employees, maybe they're just not speaking because I'm there. So they'll have to ask the other board members for their input.
Unfortunately, I don't know if we'd be the best to ask about it. Um, you know, we, we kind of get the 10,000-foot view, um, you know, we get the reports from the managers and the report from the director every month. And we, we trust them to be the boots on the ground that are taking care of the, the organizational culture and the vibe and all that. I knew, I do know that in the, in the few instances where I've been asked to step in, um, you know, we, we have always looked for common ground. Um, you know, it's, it's never, again, and I've only been brought in a couple of times to handle a few issues, um, but it's, it's never from a punishing, uh, standpoint, it's from how can we come together and solve this issue so that we can go on from it and, you know, continue to be, you know, serving the people who are coming through our doors.
Right. Cool. That's, um, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for taking the time to come in and interview, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Of course. So I think that, um, the next candidate, I think we're going to have them come in in about 10 minutes. We're going to, uh, um, kind of run back through our notes real quick, uh, give everybody an opportunity to catch up, um, because I know I, I had to use a little bit of shorthand in some of my notes, so.
Mr. Chair, did you want to remain on the record or do you want to take a 10-minute recess and then reconvene?
Uh, I would, I would recommend a 10-minute recess.
I, you, that powers, that, that's within your power, not mine.
Um, I will call a 10-minute recess. That's the one. I believe that we are ready to reconvene and we'll.
Am I saying this end again? Don't make me ask this.
No, we'll, we'll start with.
No.
So that way I'm the only one that has to ask the same questions.
Well, you're the boss.
And so our next candidate is Joseph Schweis.
Right.
Yes. He had the.
Oh, I got it, I got it. Uh-oh.
Right. Well, we're, we're.
Well, we bounced it around, Chris.
And that was a, a rearrangement we just did.
They're trying to keep it from being.
So we had the, had it sequential, one after the other, that worked. Give you a moment and then I can invite him in.
Lock and roll.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Please go ahead and state your name for the record first.
The microphone is, yes, it needs to be green. Okay?
My name is Joe Schweiz, uh, technically Joseph, but I'm a little less formal than that.
Excellent. So just to go over the logistics of this a little bit, we're going to start on my left, your right, and we're going to have a litany of questions that we'll go across and then we'll go across a second time.
Sure.
So we'll start over at trustee Cranston.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, please tell us about your experience as it relates to this position and why you're interested in the Carson City Library Director position.
Sure. Uh, I've been a library director for over 12 years now. Very enjoyable to me. Um, I really like leading, um, problem solving, obviously, and, uh, and meeting people. It, it's a great combination of those things. So, um, it's kind of, this is definitely a second career and, uh, so I feel like this was the right career for me, so. Over those years I've learned a lot, dealt with a lot of adversity and then hopefully made improvements to the communities in which I've worked. Carson City interests me, uh, just because I've, I've visited many a time. Uh, it's not a secret that my, uh, father moved out here a while ago and, uh, now my stepmother, um, as well. And I've always really respected this community for, um, one, how well it uses the library, but also for, for kind of caring about itself. Um, there's a lot here to be envious of for, if you come from another location. It seems like there's a healthier lifestyle than most places have and, um, that, that fits in well with, with how I feel like a community should, uh, not only treat its citizens, but how the, the citizens should treat the community by turning it into something, um, special. I feel like that's what Carson City is.
So your, uh, your father and your stepmother, you said they live here?
They do now. Uh, my, my father retired, um, a while ago and moved to the Southwest and, um, had kind of been in multiple areas, been in Arizona, been in Boulder City, Nevada, Henderson and, um, it never seemed like the right fit necessarily, but they moved here and, I don't know, it's just fun to see him happy. So, and he goes out for walks, uh, which is always a nice thing with all the, the parks and paths, so, um, makes me happy that he's healthier than he was when he was living in Henderson, so. Uh-oh. I also like Henderson, but, I remember, yeah, when it was a separate city.
Hi.
Hi.
Could you lead us through your decision-making process when you're confronted with a difficult problem?
Sure. Um, just trying to think of the easiest way to go about that, but, um.
Or if you have a example of.
Yeah.
A problem that you.
Well, I'm just thinking, if it's, say, a personnel issue or, or something like that, I, I make sure to review our policies, uh, go through what we have, uh, that would, you know, maybe put it into whatever the, the situation might be. If it's something that's not covered in policy, which does happen, uh, sometimes you quick review the, the state laws or, or other things, make sure that you've doing the right thing on your end. Sometimes an issue is, is, um, bigger than what it sounds like at, at first glance. Usually do some investigating, depending on what kind of problem it is, make sure that as much of the full story is known, uh, about what may have happened and, and what may just be perceived. And, um, once I've got a little bit more of the story and then kind of the rule set around it, make sure to follow those thoroughly and not be very flexible. You know, you don't want to have a situation happen, you know, with a different person and then all of a sudden you're, you're doing something different. You have to be fair with, with whatever the decision is and then apply that towards, you know, every incident. So if it is something that happens more than once that you, unless you learn something different, you should apply the same, uh, decision-making, uh, process to, regardless of, of who it is.
Do you think you're better than most in solving problems or average or?
Yeah. Um, I was fortunate enough to, um, I know I didn't say I liked my first profession, but, uh, I have an engineering degree as my undergrad and so a lot of that is problem solving and research and, um, you know, that's an important one because if you make a mistake there, it could be an injury, it could be anything else. So it, the process that you learn when you do that, uh, is very applicable towards everyday situations and so I, I kind of feel like it. I react a lot less as a an emotional instinct or a gut reaction and apply a lot more thorough things before I make a decision.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So can you tell us about a time when you developed a viable strategy but encountered a roadblock and had to adjust your plan?
Oh, sure. Oh, gosh. Let's see. Well, we did just go through a really long, my current library, we hadn't had a strategic plan in quite a long time. And we worked with an outside agent and kind of did a lot of research and communities, you know, communication and a lot of interviews. We had been very, not isolated, but insular. We kind of pointed our own way for a long time. So this was a huge change in in process and learned a lot and it was fantastic to do. But a lot of people still saw what they what they wanted to see out of the interviews. And so the roadblocks have that initially started were, you know, I still want to see this. No one in the community asked for it, but I still want to see this. So we did have to do a lot of change management and a lot of discussion. And we did change some of the things that we that came up on the plan just so that they would be like the roadblocks were, well, this is not defined. So we instead of saying like, there's a goal to this, we we said we'd like to see an increase in something or we'd like to become a leader in the area. And it's like, well, there's no definition of what that would mean. And so a lot of it was revision, a lot of it was just kind of changing it, trying to get to the same outcome, if possible, by saying, okay, well, we didn't define that very well. Let's find out what it means to us to be this. So the roadblocks, a lot of the time were were internal. We've run into external roadblocks as well as far as sometimes it's funding, sometimes it's awareness, sometimes it's it's other things, but we've gotten really well versed in not just changing where the times if need be, but also telling our story so that maybe the roadblock can be reduced. When you first look at it, it might be daunting, but sometimes telling your story gets that roadblock moved.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
So describe your informing strategy with customers, bosses, peers, and direct reports.
Sure. We've been working a lot on on that. It's the, you know, tell them, tell them you told them, tell them again. A lot of it is working on on methods of communication that that work for different audiences. So we, you know, we incorporate a wiki, a staff wiki for informing them, but then also make sure to have memos, emails with the public. We, if possible, try the paper. There'll be signage. We'll put it on Facebook. We'll go through every social media platform we can. If there's money, we might even advertise some of the things, you know, billboards or Facebook ads, trying to get out just even beyond your your patron base, but also to the rest of the community to say, hey, this is this is a change and that it's for the better. It's sometimes requires more than effort than you'd think, but it usually pays off in the fact that more people are aware of it. And when someone says they haven't heard it, especially on the staff side, you know, you can say, well, actually you signed the memo. But I also think it's important to find new methods that might work better than others. Our wiki is okay, but we're still trying to incorporate some better technology that might be a little bit more informative and also interactive, I guess. So it's a it's a work in progress, but I think that all communication should be a work in progress.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
Oh, good afternoon, sorry.
You got me on that one.
Compare, okay, ready?
Yep.
Compare and contrast, it's an essay question.
Sure.
Examples of times you've been effective and ineffective in political situations.
Sure. So every year, the Kentucky libraries have sent directors and board members and advocates on the same day. So there's a library legislative day. Our state legislature, I think, is a little bit different than most. It's a very short session. Sometimes as short as like 90 days and then the budget years are about 120. Yeah. Good work if you can get it, I guess. So that has been successful at times in really having a a chance to meet our legislators where they work, which is rare. So you can bring people into their office and show them the impact of their decisions or possible future decisions. And it's been very effective in making sure that, say, the funding levels and tax rates that that are somewhat set at the state level, they have power over possibly changing it. And there has been legislation proposed, I think, for at least six straight years to change that and reduce the powers that the library and the library board have as far as their funding and and put it into the hands of elected county officials instead. It's definitely been an arm wrestling match, but we've been very effective as getting those bills killed. And librarians don't come with a whole lot of lobbyists, so it's been a lot of grassroots campaigns. And so I've been an active part of that last few years for sure. And darkening the door of all of my elected officials if I can. A time when I was not effective, our our Board of Trustees is set and it's a state created process where two names are selected and sent to the state librarian. He sends those back to the usually the county and then the the county selects from the two names. And so we had, I had visited with the magistrate, I had visited with the county judge executive who ultimately runs the county board. And I was unsuccessful in getting them to actually take either of the two names, even though they had been approved by the state librarian and it was more of a shell select situation according to the law, they would not move forward. And we tried for months and we couldn't get a clean answer and we couldn't get anything, but they would not go forward with either of the two names that we had selected. So we had to compromise. I would call it unsuccessful in the fact that if you run into a roadblock like that politically, there's less that you can do than what you think. But what we were able to do is compromise and and get one name from them and a new name from from us. And obviously they selected the name that they had submitted. But the person that they had submitted, we've worked with and educated the second that she made it to the board so that we could say, okay, here are your duties under the law and here's what this position means. And she's actually still on the board and she's one of our best board members. So it we turned it around to to work out so she's not just a, I guess, a puppet for for the magistrate. So so we did hopefully spin it into a good thing. We'll see. She's been on the board for four years now, so. It was my favorite thing to go through, but I think we can make a positive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that the political aspect of the job, is there something you have to actually like dig for or was it something that can naturally do?
I always thought I was kind of introvert when it came to some of those things, but it's it's come quite naturally. Really just trying to find a relatable topic to start, breaking ice when it comes to what I do as a library director and a librarian. Sometimes it's as easy as answering, you know, oh, our library is really that important with the internet? And I have, you know, a couple of different ways that I can get in to conversations with the people. But sometimes it's just knowing like, oh, there's this issue that's going on at the state or the county level and starting that conversation with someone and getting them to talk has been, I find that it comes pretty naturally. And I'm already watching the news and studying up on some of that just as a personal preference, but it has worked out well to be, you know, if they don't want to talk about the library, but they want to talk about something else for a bit, I'll I'll listen and try to be informed as possible. And that that part's worked out well, but I enjoy talking to people. It's one of the reasons I left the first profession was that it was a little quiet. So libraries give me a chance. Oddly enough, you know, you're supposed to shush people, but it it gives me a chance to meet a lot of people and and get to know about them. So my interest in people's backgrounds and hobbies and interests and motivation, I've I've learned to apply that, even if they, you know, they're politicians and sometimes they're, well, I won't say anything bad, but sometimes you think you know someone, but if you have a chance to talk, it gives you that chance too. So I found that that even some of the the other people that, you know, that get a chance to talk to, it's like, oh, okay, yeah, I am having a good time with this and it's very interesting.
So this question, this is a three part question. How do you get results, build team spirit and prevent burnout of people all at the same time?
Okay. Okay. So results, I think having a well-defined plan is definitely a better way to get results. When I was young and rash and just thought, we should do this. I used to think it was kind of a ticket results, you needed a first follower. And you find someone who's also very enthusiastic about it and you kind of build off that energy. It doesn't work that well if you don't have a good plan. And sometimes that first follower is also a loose cannon and you just end up, yeah, you get results, but they're not as great as they could be. So now with the way I view things, it helps to have, you know, communication, organization, a well-defined concept of what you actually want to achieve and then some strategies to achieve that. And I find that our teams appreciate that and that kind of helps build that, some of the motivation that it requires to actually get there is the teamwork, listening to their perspectives and building that into the plan has been very helpful. And then I'm well aware that all of the success that that our organization has is predicated on the people who, you know, all pitch in and do the work. So I really hate taking praise for for getting things done because it's it's been the staff. So I remind them all the time that we can't get here without you and the fact that we are here is because they've done a lot of work. And it's been a good team builder. I think it's been empowering as well. And I've learned a lot about empowerment with with the staff lately is that that has been wonderful motivation and you see results that you really wouldn't have even expected. Burnout's a little bit tougher. You know, again, it's, actually, we just had a motivational speaker come and talk and really said a couple of great things that resonate with our our staff. And so I feel like I just learned some great lessons about burnout, but it's not just the empowerment of what the organization can do, but it's also reminding people that, you know, you're your own biggest critic, but you're all, you're also your best coach and best motivator. And if you want to accomplish things, you know, even if it's something small every day. And I think that the library as a an employer offers a multitude of things to learn and, you know, burnout can be kind of thwarted by helping find new avenues, a new hidden talent that someone has and then you can say, oh, okay, hey, let's heavy work on this part so that they can see something different, do something different. Even if they end up not doing that all the time afterwards, it gives them at least a chance to see like, ooh, I didn't have it so bad either. Which has worked out well for for a lot of our staff too. When they see like, oh, there's a lot of hard work that goes in a lot of this stuff, I'd rather go back to, you know, a different position. That's worked out well. But I I think you know, keeping the at the workplace, interesting, rotating staff, doing doing some things where they they get a chance to learn and and train in little bits of everything. And then growing as an organization has really helped. So if if you change, it makes it so it doesn't seem the same every day and so the organization can grow and try new things and achieve more or try to achieve more, that people feel a lot more motivated to to do what they're doing and and feel less like it's a tiresome act.
Tell us about a time when you felt pulled or pulled in opposite or different directions on a values or ethics issue.
That's a really good one. I mean, it has happened. I thinking back to my first position, right, I was a little greener. My, I worked with a board that had a lot of experience, but a lot of it was just that the same people had come on and and served on the board for years. And so we talked about some discipline issues, some staff issues and some other things. And it would turn out that not only after all this happened, would the board go out to dinner with one the staff member that was having the discipline issues, but we would, I don't know if they have closed session in Nevada, I'm sure that you all do, where things are outside of the open meeting act. They would tell her everything that happened in the closed session. And so it definitely pulled me because obviously the board was my employer and and confident, but to have the employee have, you know, more power than I did at that point, definitely pushed me and pulled me in in multiple directions. And it it was a tough thing to try to overcome and a lot of it was just being very blunt with the board and saying, this, this is really unacceptable that you violated, you know, state law to explain, you know, or tell them everything that we discussed behind closed doors. And then talking to that employee and saying, you know, you've you've got to go home and leave the office during the board meeting and not meet them for them. It was a tough one and it definitely ended up being a quite a large conflict. It took a lot to get through that one, but that's probably the biggest example I can think of.
So you, how did you actually solve that problem?
Solved it? That one took a lot of effort. And again, it was just making sure that the board understood like that had to stop immediately.
Okay, so you stuck to your values then and you.
I did. It was, you know, at first I just didn't know what to do, but, you know, when I explained like, this is, you're in violation of some things that you swore and owes to as well. And so that was, you know, I I can deal with, you know, there's going to be treachery and some workforces and and what have you, but to have, you know, people who were legally responsible for what happened, that was the other thing. I thought, you guys are are in action, like, I'm not in trouble. You're the ones who are legally responsible for this if something happens. So I explained it a lot as best I could, but definitely stuck to like this. I know we're, you know, off the the grid a little bit and some libraries in Kentucky are just not, no one attends meetings and they felt like that was okay, but no, this is still, like, definitely wanted them to know, like, I don't like it, but I also am trying to protect you.
So have you ever had to be a champion for people who are not like you?
So have you ever had to be a champion for people who are not like you?
Oh, yeah. I grew up kind of a strange kid. So I always feel like there are some things that I learned along the way that like, you know, being unique is not unique and that's in a good way. So it's, I feel like it's the library's job to really be available to everyone. And I don't view people as different or other or anything like that. Is, half the time I'm just happy that they're using the library. But I've also really tried to work with, you know, explaining to staff and sometimes explaining to angry patrons that, you know, our job is to serve everyone and we're happy to do it. And if that makes you angry, I understand your position. But, you know, we're going to have a display on something you don't like every once in a while. And we're going to have events that don't cater strictly to, you know, their background. And, you know, sometimes you have a good conversation and then they understand it. Sometimes you have a good conversation and they're still angry. But it's the library's job to work with everyone and support everyone and be available to everyone. And that's something that I've tried to live. And, you know, I feel like the profession backs that up, which is really nice. So it gives me the confidence to do that all the time.
Okay, so what is your vision of a public library's purpose and role in society?
Oh, sure. The library has the opportunity to be a lot of different things. And luckily, a lot of that doesn't take tons of money. So it's nice for the library to be a third space, be a location for whatever the public needs, be it events or programming or meeting space or just a comfortable chair for a spot. Entertainment's always a good thing to provide just because people have a lot of stress. So if they can find a book on the shelf and get lost and enjoy themselves for a little bit, great. You know, that's wonderful. Education, I think, is a huge element of what the library can provide, be it early childhood education. Again, it's a free thing. And there are some people who just don't have any opportunity to send their kids to daycare or the other, like, it's not just education at that point, but it's also socialization. And we've gotten, I've gotten some stories back on how important it is to some people that you just never consider. You know, you think about story timing, you know, a chance for kids to learn and play. But not only are they getting, you know, again, some childhood or, sorry, kindergarten preparation from that, but sometimes the parents are terrified to attend because they may not have any friends in the area. They may not know anyone else with children. So the socialization aspect of some of the educational programs is just as important as the outcomes of the education. But I do feel like education is big, the lifelong learning type things, the fact that, you know, there are tools available to libraries like Lynda and Treehouse that, you know, not only educating someone, but you can change their lives. You can get them into a new profession. You can empower the community that way by, you know, maybe a factory leaves town and, but you're able to educate enough people to get a different industry to show up. It's totally different. There's no other place like that. So, you know, anything from space to entertainment to education, it's no small feat of that. But I also think of the 21st century and, you know, we're working through this at my library. It's getting your name out there is the other huge part. Your library is no good being the best kept secret. So in the 21st century, if you're not trying your hardest to tell that story and get more people to attend or even just find, you know, a few people a month or a week that have never been to the library or it stopped going to the library to come back, then you're doing a better job. And that's one of the other things that libraries need to work for in the 21st century.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us or anything you would like to add that didn't come up in this interview?
Oh, sure. I'm always curious what you all see as the biggest challenges in your community to say the library achieving everything it needs to. So are there financial issues that you see or perhaps other community issues that might be a threat to the library?
I think finances are always an issue. And I'll just stop there.
Sure.
Money is always the issue. I think also, like you said, getting the word out in the community and making sure people know the resources that we have, not just that we're here, but the things that we can provide to them, I think, is something we could do better.
Also, there's so many people that think the only thing in the library is just books.
Yeah.
I am so tired of hearing that, including from my husband.
And that's a big thing that we've been trying to combat, you know, to echo what Diane was just saying. You know, you mentioned the education opportunities and the workforce development side and things like that. We're trying to get that out, you know, to help the community all the time.
Sure. I was just getting an oil change and someone said, oh, you work at the library. And, you know, again, the whole, what, how important is the library now that you have the internet? And so, yeah, I thought, well, I'm stuck in my car, so I'm going to talk to you right now. And, you know, I could have gotten angry, but instead it's that opportunity where it's like, oh, my gosh. You know, what do you like? Do you like comics? Do you like whatever? Do you have a smartphone? Do you want to sign up for a library card right now? So taking that opportunity is always, always fun. But I know sometimes you also are like, oh, God, that question again. Are there any challenges at the state level that you all see? I only ask because, you know, that seems to be something that's happening in areas near me, so.
Well, I think, again, at the state level even, it's budget items that, you know, that are the problem and tax issues. There's never enough funding and all that sort of stuff.
Sure. And I noticed that the strategic plan that's current ends in 2019. So is there support for another law or not long range? Because that's silly nowadays, but at least a few year strategic plan in the next?
We are actually going to be looking at that at our next meeting.
Sorry, I didn't want to step on toes.
We've been, we've been working on that, actually.
Excellent, okay.
We've been in the process with an outside company.
And our previous director was excellent at interfacing with the community, Kiwanis Club, city councils, Board of Supervisors, all kinds of civic groups to let them know we're not just books anymore.
Good. Yeah, no, I definitely look forward to that interaction again. It's amazing how you just learn so much that if you don't go out and ask those questions, like, we could do anything, but that's terrifying too. So sometimes knowing what that community wants is, okay, now we have some goals. So I love that process. I think it's very important. I think I'm out of questions.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for taking the time to head out here and interview with us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and take another 10-minute recess to get our notes together and all that.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good afternoon, yeah.
So if we could get you to just start with a stating your name for the record. Go ahead and push the button on the mic to turn the light green. There you go.
Am I good to go?
Yes.
You can hear me? Hi, I'm David Stackman.
Excellent. So just to give you an idea of the logistics of how this is going to work, we have a litany of questions. We're going to start with Diane, on my right, your left, and we'll move across and then we'll go back to her and move across a second time.
Okay.
So with that, we'll go ahead and go with Diane.
Good morning.
Morning.
Tell us about your experiences as it relates to this position and why you are interested in the Carson City Library Director position, please.
Oh, thank you. So I've had, I have over 10 years' experience as a library manager, so I've worked in urban, rural, and suburban libraries, so I have a great deal of experience. You know, one of my passions is really, you know, making those community connections and getting out in the community, you know, being a leader in the community. I think that's really important as a library director. Like currently, for example, I'm the president of our local Qantas Club, so it's not just about, you know, for me, it's not just about going out in the community and promoting the library. That's excellent as well, but I think it's important too to take a leadership role in the community and have that feeling and people realize the library, you know, people always think of the library as the heart of the community when you're out there and more and more and, you know, people see you and they really start to understand and get to know you as a person. So I'd say that's one of my strengths, that's one of my passions, that's one reason I'm very interested in this position. It seems like there's a real, great amount of a community organization, seems like a real strong-knit community, lots of things going on, so I really like that, that it seems like, you know, it's really connected and, you know, people, people seem like they're there for each other and it just seems like a really great community to be a part of. Seems like a nice place to raise a family as well. The library itself, you know, I really enjoyed taking a look at the library yesterday. I like what's been done in there with the, with the digitatorium and, you know, the maker space and that sort of thing, so I like the innovative things that have been done. And, you know, for me, you know, to really add value to the library, you know, I met some of the staff yesterday and I thought they're, you know, really very customer-focused and, you know, very friendly folks and, you know, just to add on to that, because that's, that's really another one of my passions, is to create that wow customer service and for staff to be excited about coming to work, to, you know, feel that sense of, you know, fun and joy in the workplace and, you know, to get behind a common purpose, you know. That's, that's a major thing for me too, is, you know, why, why are we here as a library? What is our purpose? So to create that sense of common purpose and to, you know, work together to, you know, figure out what that is and, you know, how we can work together to achieve our goals.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I just follow up a quick?
Oh, sure.
Have you been to Carson before this trip or have you?
I've been to Lake Tahoe.
Yeah.
I think I saw Carson City, like the lights, but this was my first trip to Carson City.
First trip through here. So you've been to Reno before, Tahoe, Reno?
I have, I have, but, you know, it's been, it's been quite some time, but, you know, it's a really, really great area. It sounds like Reno's really booming as well and I imagine that kind of trickles down to here as well with, you know, with real estate and, you know, businesses popping up all over, so. Sounds like it was the right time to...
So lead us through your decision-making process on a difficult situation that you've worked on or a different, difficult problem.
Difficult problem that we worked on? You know, one thing that comes to mind is, we had a remodel in our library, you know, a while back, I think probably like, probably like nine months ago, and the issue was, you know, while we were, while we were in the remodel, we, we were gonna, we decided we were going to get rid of our movie tower machines. And the thing of, the reason we wanted to get rid of our movie tower machines was, they weren't supported anymore by the, by the company, so once they, you know, once they broke, they were broken, so there, you know, there wasn't any support forums, you know, we, the whole idea was, you know, what are, so as we were in the remodel, you know, the idea was, well, what are we going to do with our DVDs? You know, we have several thousand DVDs. And also, the machines itself were very labor-intensive to load the machines, so we were looking, I mean, we're looking at at least two hours a day of staff time to load the machines. Yeah, so it was, it was quite a process, so, so it was kind of, it was kind of a multi-fold thing and also at the same time, we were having one of our people who put books away, she was retiring, so all this was going on at the same time, so, you know, so my, my thinking was, you know, how, how, you know, what's a systematic process for, for handling all these things at the same time? You know, and one thing I thought of, you know, we, you know, talking, talking to the group and doing some research as well, there wasn't really an alternative to those machines, they just don't really make anything like that anymore, so, you know, what were the alternatives? And, you know, one, what we ended up deciding was to just put the DVDs out on the floor. And, you know, the reason that we hadn't done that before was, you know, previously in the past, there'd been some theft, you know, with the DVDs, so, you know, what we were thinking was, well, if we put them close by, you know, the most popular ones close by the help desk, then people are less likely to, you know, want to run off with them. And, you know, since we'd gotten that machines, DVDs aren't quite the, the high theft item as they used to be, you know, people I think used to take them to the pawn shop and, you know, might get like a dollar for them or something like that, but that wasn't really the case anymore, so, you know, thinking about that, so that's what we decided, but, you know, also I knew there would be some consternation from staff in terms of, you know, well, these DVDs are just gonna, we're gonna put them out and people are just gonna steal them. You know, so working through with staff, you know, well, you know, what are some solutions that we can come up with so that doesn't happen? You know, what are, what are some, you know, things we can do to prevent that? You know, and we, you know, we talked, that's what we talked about, well, maybe if we put them closer, the, the hot items closer to the desk, you know, another thing we thought of was, somebody mentioned, well, you know, what if we took the, the newest ones and took them out of the cases and put them behind the desk and that way we could just kind of, you know, when somebody brought in the empty case, we could just file through and grab the disc and, you know, I thought that was a pretty smart idea, because that way we could at least prevent theft from the, you know, the high, the ones that people really like. So that's what we ended up doing. And there was also the idea of, you know, now that we have the, more or less like an extra two hours a day of staff time, you know, how does that work? So, you know, and thinking of this person retiring, so what we ended up doing was, we were able to split the person's hours amongst a few people and, and add hours to our help desk staff so that we could, you know, provide better customer service for folks, because freeing up at least two hours a day really gave us a lot more wiggle room with our folks who put books away, they didn't have as much on their plate. But at the same time, you know, talking to the, you know, our folks who put the books away, you know, what, what can we do to make sure that you're not overloaded? You know, what can we do to make sure that your job is, you know, not, where you feel like you're not overloaded? So one thing we came up with was, we decided to do, we have something called the Hold List, where, you know, a few times a day, I think like three times a day, we get a list and we pull books, so we decided we, that our help desk staff could do one of those lists, so that was a way to kind of help them. So it was, it was definitely, you know, I'd see it as a win-win for everybody, you know, people got more hours, the customers were more adequately, adequately served by our help desk staff because we had more help desk hours, we could help people. That also freed up some of our librarians to go out more in the community and promote, you know, the library, myself included, so it definitely had a nice, systematic, you know, win for everybody in that regard. And, you know, just, you know, talking over with staff about the, you know, the change, you know, because we were having the remodel and all this was kind of happening at the same time, so, you know, just, you know, putting it on the table that, you know, change is difficult, you know, we accept that, you know, there's, there's, there's going to be anxiety when it comes to change, but just, you know, know that we, you know, we, we're going to work through it and we're going to have, come up with some solutions to make it the best that it can be. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just getting caught up on my notes real quick.
On yours.
Okay, so can you tell us about a time when you developed a viable strategy but encountered a roadblock and had to adjust your plan?
I'm sure, you know, one thing that comes to mind is, I'm the leader of the business team for Pierce County Library, so I'm in charge of, you know, five librarians, and our job is to, you know, create a strategic plan for, you know, the, you know, business, you know, how do we serve business? How do we serve people or, you know, what does that mean? You know, what is our plan for, for serving business? Does that mean people's, you know, established business, people just thinking of starting a business, people wanting to grow their business, what does that mean? So, so I'm in charge of, you know, trying to figure all that out, and, you know, one thing, you know, we were getting together, one of our approaches was, we wanted to go out to local business organizations and promote our, our business resources, because, you know, we, one question I asked was, you know, what do we do that's unique? You know, what do we do as a library that's unique that other organizations don't do? So that was something we came up with, so anyway, we were developing a, I don't know if you're all familiar with Prezi at all, we were developing a Prezi and, you know, when I was talking to some of the other librarians, they're like, you know, my experience when I go out to business groups, it's a lot of times business groups aren't as interested in these resources as you might think, a lot of them are already established businesses, you know, maybe we should invite into our presentation to make it more flexible so it encompasses all of our services. So it's just not business resources, you know, because a lot of times we'll go out there and people are, say, oh, I'm really interested in, you know, audiobooks, I'm really interested in downloadable materials, I'm really interested in, you know, some of your online resources, tell me about Storytime, you know, and people are interested in other things. So that's kind of what we did, was we made this Prezi that was all-encompassing, that, that covered, you know, sort of the gamut of our services, and so then when I, you know, when I, you know, we got this done and, you know, put quite a bit of work into it, and, you know, I took it to my boss to take a look at, and she's like, no. She said, you guys are supposed to be out there promoting business services and, you know, you're, you're giving them the kitchen sink here. So it was kind of one of those things that, you know, I think if I would have had it to do over again, I would have, you know, brought our idea to her at the initial phase to, to kind of get that buy-in and, you know, say, this is what we're, we're thinking of, we're not, we're not wanting to neglect our business services, we're just wanting to make sure that it's, you know, all, all encompassing. So, you know, we did go back to the drawing board on that one, but I will tell you, I have, I have used that Prezi several times in other venues, so it's come in, it's come in handy when promoting the library, maybe not to business groups, but, you know, to other groups, I can pull that out and say, well, you know, here's, you know, what are you interested in learning about the library today or what are some questions you have? So it didn't, it wasn't all for naught, but I, you know, if I would, on the front end, I definitely should have involved her in the process right away to get her buy-in on that one.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Could you describe for us your strategy for informing customers, bosses, peers, and people who report directly to you about what you're doing?
Oh, sure, you know, there's definitely a lot of, you know, ways of communication, for sure. You know, one thing I do is, I send out a weekly email to everybody so people know, you know, know what's going on in the library, you know, I just call it what's happening, so just so people are informed of, you know, what, you know, what the library's up to that week as well as what I'm up to, like I include like, this is my meetings, and then I, I might give a little recap of, you know, the meetings from the week before.
Staff email?
Yes. So that's, so that's, that's one way of, of communicating and, you know, that, you know, in that way if people have questions and that sort of thing. We also do a stand-up meeting every morning, which I really like, and that's a great way to just let folks know this is what's going on in the library and ask questions, you know, what's, you know, what are some important things that we need to know about that's going on today? And we have a template that, that, you know, somebody is assigned to, they jot down the important things that are going on that day. It's not real involved, it doesn't take very long, it just takes a few minutes, and we send that out because we know we do have multiple shifts of people, and that's a requirement when people come in on their shift is to read that email to know what's going on that day. So that's, that's really helpful. I really like that stand-up meeting and, you know, it only has to be like 10 minutes, and, you know, sometimes there's some, some good, you know, brainstorming that goes on during those stand-up meetings too, you know, throwing ideas back and forth to each other and that sort of thing is, is pretty awesome. You know, we also do monthly staff meetings, and that's, that's a good opportunity to talk about, you know, new things that are going on as well as another good opportunity for brainstorming as well. I do meet with, my director reports once a month, has a one-on-one, and just, you know, we talk about, you know, what, you know, what their goals are, you know, how they're doing with their goals and, you know, how, how things are going, so that's, that's really pretty helpful as well. So the, you know, evaluation process, process is a continuous process, it's not just like, oh, here's your evaluation for the year and that's the end of it, but just, you know, how are we doing on our goals? And, you know, just, just an opportunity to check in and, you know, you know, I like to ask them, you know, how are you doing? How is the team doing and what can I do to help? So those are... is the team doing? And what can I do to help? So those are some things that, that I ask. And I, you know, also too, um, you know, I do have an open door policy. So anytime somebody wants to come talk to me, they can. Um, I thought about doing, uh, I haven't done it yet, so I won't talk about that. Um, it was, was it, could you repeat the question? Make sure I didn't miss anything.
Uh, I think the only one you didn't cover was, um, customers.
Customers, you know.
How does your?
How do, how do we, um?
Yeah. How do you communicate with customers?
Well, one way we ca-, we communicate with customers is we have a monthly calendar that we print out. You know, we have our online calendar, but we also have our monthly calendar. Um, that's one way. Uh, you know, also if there's, you know, gonna be a holiday if we're closed, you know, we have a sign saying, you know, we're, we're gonna be closed on, on this day. Or if there's a change in service, you know, um, for a while, we, um, we did automatic renewals for a while. Um, and it ended up costing the library some money. So they decided that maybe that wasn't the best idea. Um, so just, you know, communicating that way and, and trying to communicate, you know, well in advance, you know, so that way people, people really know what's going on. And, you know, talking to folks, I always, you know, I always, you know, tell staff about, um, you know, when we're working the help desk to, you know, promote our services, you know, to, you know, if people, you know, if, if people give an indication they might be interested in, oh, you know, we're having this program on X, Y, and Z coming up, you know, you should take one of our, um, you know, calendars. So, yeah.
Could you compare and contrast examples of times you've been effective and ineffective in political situations?
Times I've been effective and ineffective in political situations? Hmm. Have to think about that one. Uh, you know, one thing that, one thing that I was proud of, uh, was, you know, a couple of years ago, we, um, needed new, um, siding and paint for the library. And, um, you know, that's something that, you know, I talked to, you know, the city council about and, um, you know, the city maintenance and everything. And there was an opportunity for a grant, you know, to help pay for some of that stuff, you know, it was, um, like an FDA grant. So we were able to, um, you know, it was like a rural library, it's kind of things. We're, we're able to get a grant for that. And, you know, to talk, um, you know, talk to, um, you know, like supporters of the library, that could be like, um, we had a library advisory board. And we also had a friends of the library and, you know, talk to customers about it. So, you know, that the, you know, that this is something that, you know, that, um, the city was gonna vote on, you know, you know, whether, you know, to give us money to, um, you know, fund this new project. So when, you know, when they, they did vote on it, you know, we had a, a lot of library supporters, um, in the audience. I think we were the only people there. So, so that was helpful. And they didn't, they didn't end up passing that. Um, so that, so that was the time I, I felt like I was effective in, in a political situation was just, and just letting our, you know, supporters know that, um, you know, this was going on. And, you know, had some, you know, some citizens stand up and say, oh, you know, we really need to, um, you know, make the library look better because it's, you know, it's starting to, you know, the site, it wasn't, it was that hard, you know, it was that, um, cedar siding, which isn't very good in Washington. Um, so they put some Hardy Plank siding on there. And, you know, that's good for pretty much the life of the building. So that worked out pretty well. Let's see, ineffective. Hmm. Let me think about that. Hmm. I'm thinking. I'm sorry. Let me think.
The time where you were, you were attempting to do something and you were blocked politically?
Um, let's see, I don't, let's see. I, you know, I don't, I think, I think one, I think one thing that comes to mind, and I don't know if I was really, um, blocked politically, but just, um, you know, we have a, a county commissioner who, um, you know, he's very much into, um, you know, safety, like, like, uh, community safety. And, you know, you know, just talking to him, you know, I was talking to him at a, a, it wasn't an official meeting, it was like unrelated meeting. And, you know, he was, he was saying, you know, because the library had, um, 24-hour, um, Wi-Fi. And, you know, he felt, you know, some of his constituents were complaining that it was drawing in a, a bad crowd at night, um, because we had, um, we, see, we, you could use the meeting room basically as late as you wanted to. You could use the meeting room when, when the library was closed. So, um, you know, people using the meeting room, you know, maybe community groups or whatever, they felt like there was a bad element hanging around the library at night, you know, because we had the, you know, the 24-hour, um, you know, um, and, uh, Wi-Fi access. And, you know, he, you know, he was, he called us enablers. He said, you're enabling the, the drug crowd to, to utilize the library. And, you know, I was like, oh, you know, I can, you know, I can understand, um, you know, you know, where you're coming from on that one. Uh, you know, we, you know, we do try to provide a service for, for, you know, everybody to use the library. You know, we definitely want to keep it open, you know, and we, and we can't necessarily say that, you know, what people are doing, you know, is, is illegal or what have you, um, and that sort of thing. There, there hadn't been any sort of crime or anything like that. I think, I think maybe that, maybe he felt like these, you know, these folks might have looked unsavory perhaps or something, you know. So, you know, it's something that, you know, I, you know, I told, I said, well, you know, let me, you know, let's take it up with, um, you know, our, you know, our administration and, you know, see what, see what they say about it. Because, you know, that, we were, you know, thinking of, you know, safety as an issue because the, the thing about it is, um, you know, people, you know, really, we didn't really want folks, um, hanging out at the library, um, and car camping. You know, we didn't want the library to be a place that folks could camp at. You know, that's not really the purpose of the library. Um, but that being said, our hands were, well, actually our hands weren't really tied. Um, the police's hands were tied. Because if you, if you, you know, if you, if a police officer rolled up on somebody and they were, you know, sleeping in their car or whatever, they could fairly easily make an argument that, I'm using the Wi-Fi. I could have every right to be here. Um, so, you know, that was something that, you know, the police's hands were tied. And that, and that's something I did bring to the attention of, of, um, administration. And, you know, what we ended up doing was we did end up cutting off the Wi-Fi, um, after nine o'clock. Um, and, you know, that's something that I communicated to, um, our county commissioner. And so I just wanted, wanted to let you know that, you know, we did, um, you know, cut off the Wi-Fi after nine o'clock. And that was one of those communication things where we had the big sandwich board out there for a while, letting people know that, you know, the Wi-Fi would be. And, and that has also helped the police, because then they could enforce our no trespassing laws. It's kind of hard to say you're not trespassing when there's a service that they can use. So I think it, it definitely worked out. But originally I was kind of, I was kind of ta-, taken aback by when he, when he called us enablers. I didn't really know what to say. I was like, oh.
Okay. How do you get results, build team spirit, and not burnout people all at the same time?
Good question. So, um, I think it's important to, um, you know, in order to get results, I think it's important for people to feel involved in the process. So they feel like it's their idea. Um, I think it's, people are much more likely to go along with it if, if they, they're much more likely to see it succeed if they feel like, okay, this is something that, you know, we thought of as a team. Uh, people seem like, like they feel, you know, when they have more autonomy, they're more likely to, um, not feel that burnout. Um, so that, you know, that's one, one way to get results. And, you know, to also have pretty clearly defined results when we're, when we're looking to do something, you know, what does success look like? Because I think it's important to define, you know, what, what does that mean exactly? Um, so, so get results. What was the other?
Build team spirit.
Build team spirit. Um, you know, I think, you know, for me, I try to, um, you know, have a sense of, you know, fun in the workplace, you know, the teamwork, uh, you know, definitely feeling like, um, we, you know, we're, it's an expectation that everybody pitches in and helps each other out. So people feel like, you know, we're all part of the team. Like, you know, as, you know, as far as that goes, I mean, everybody, you know, basically can help with most any job. I think that that's, uh, something that's kind of expected. And I think people appreciate that. People appreciate that people are willing to jump in and, and have that, that team spirit. Um, you know, one way, um, you know, that I build team spirit is to, um, you know, definitely have, um, I think it's, I think it's easy to, um, you know, go from one, um, goal or task to another. And I think that that's where burnout comes in, where there's no, um, time for celebration. So I think that that's really important is to, um, build in times to celebrate our successes and, and to bring, bring that back up. I mean, you know, like for the end of summer reading, we like to have a big party and celebrate. Because it's, you know, it's for, I don't know about, um, you know, how the Carson City Library is, but I know our library is much busier in the summer. It's like, it's, it's steady during the year, but during the summer, it's like bam, it's like super busy. So, you know, I mean, staff handle it well. Um, but just to, you know, instill that, hey, this, this is a major thing that we did. You know, we really need to celebrate this. And, you know, also, you know, whatever, you know, that we accomplish, you know, major, major goals, major initiatives, to really just to take the opportunity to celebrate those, those successes. And to, um, you know, highlight those. And I think it's also important to, um, you know, monitor, you know, people's capacity. Um, it's easy to think you can take on a bunch of tasks, um, when actuality, it can, it can burn you out pretty quickly. So I think it's important to just, you know, monitor that staff capacity. Uh, um, you know, sometimes we have a tendency, if, if somebody is really talented and really good at stuff, we just keep adding more and more work to them. And that doesn't really, um, help. Eventually, they're gonna be like, oh, no more. But they've already planned all this stuff, so they, you can't really, um, not do it. So I, I think that's really important too, is, is to, um, you know, monitor staff capacity and just make sure that we don't have too many balls in the air at the same time. Or at least if, you know, to really take it kind of slow and, you know, make sure that we can handle, um, all of this that we're attempting to doing. I think that that's really important. I mean, for me, it's kind of like I'd rather do a few things really well than a whole bunch of things and sort of, okay, not really well. You know, I think, I, I think it's, you know, I have, you know, it's easy to take on too much, but sometimes it's important to take a step back and just really, um, prioritize, you know, what, you know, why, you know, how does this tie into our overarching goals, I think is really important as well. And, you know, to build a sense of team spirit, you know, we do, um, you know, some voluntary, um, wellness initiatives as well. So, you know, maybe we'll have like a, like Walktoberfest or something like that, where we, you know, we, you know, we can, you know, get together and, and take walks and that sort of thing. And I, you know, I really like to get together with staff, like, you know, outside of work, like once a month. And just to have that time to, you know, have fun and just, you know, just get to know each other. And I, and I think that's important too, you know, building that sense of team, um, to provide those opportunities where, where staff can, um, mingle with each other, um, where, you know, where it's not like official work time, you know, like those off times. I think that's really important. We have a staff barbecue, um, a staff friends barbecue, um, every August. So that's pretty fun. So we definitely, definitely try to give those opportunities for those informal interactions where people can, um, build those relationships, I think is fun.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So tell us about a time when you felt pulled in op-, opposite or different directions on a values or an ethics issue.
Pulled in different directions on a value? Hmm. That's a good question. I, I, you know, I, I think something that comes to mind is, um, you know, you know, when people, you know, people experiencing homelessness, you know, or, you know, people that come in the library and they might, you know, obviously, um, be experiencing homelessness. And, you know, some of our customers might say something like, well, why do you let people in the library that, you know, like that or whatever? And I, you know, I just try to explain to folks that, you know, the library is here to serve everyone. We, you know, we, we serve our entire community. So, you know, just letting people, people know that, you know, that's, that's our mission. You know, we don't exclude people. Um, the only thing, uh, you know, anytime anybody is ever excluded from the library, it's because of, um, behaviors. Um, you know, if somebody, somebody's sleeping in the library, um, then we, you know, we have to wake them up. And, and, you know, if we, if we let them know, you know, if we tell them three times they've been sleep, they're sleeping, then we, then we do, um, you know, to, you know, tell them, oh, you know, come back, uh, you know, when you can stay awake or, or that sort of thing. Um, but, you know, for me, that's, that's the thing is it's, is you, we have to separate the behavior from, you know, people's preconceived notions. Even people say, oh, but I'm a taxpayer. I, I don't want people like that in the library. So just trying to, you know, make sure that people realize that the library is an open space for everybody. It's, it's the community hub. It's the place that everybody can come and feel welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that might lead very nicely into my question. Um, have you ever had to be a champion for people who are not like you?
Uh, yeah. I, I think, um, you know, in, in a situation like, like that, you know, where, where people are questioning, you know, well, what, you know, why do we let certain folks use the library? Just, you know, just to let people know that, you know, it is, it is a community space, you know, and we are here to, um, you know, for, for everyone. And, you know, something that we started, um, recently was we started a, uh, a, um, like a basket, you know, for folks that, um, you know, we can collect food. And, you know, that was, that was something that I was, I was really proud of that, you know, and some winter clothing as well. So it, you know, you could put, you know, non-perishable food items and, um, you know, um, some, you know, jackets, gloves, um, you know, some of those hand warmers, that sort of thing. So just to, you know, just to kind of, you know, um, you know, for me, it's, it's really, you know, just showing compassion for people. And to, uh, you know, you realize, you know, the library is, is here for everybody. And, you know, for, you know, for folks to understand that. And, you know, sometimes, uh, you know, staff might have, have issues with, you know, saying, oh, you know, that, that person's dirty or, or whatever. But, you know, just, you know, just to kind of, you know, talk, you know, talk to people that, you know, we're all human. You know, we're, we're all here for, um, you know, a reason. So I think, you know, and just to, you know, have that compassion. And, and, um, you know, one thing I, I did with staff is there's a really good, um, training that, that a gentleman puts on, um, that talks about, um, people experiencing homelessness. Uh, shoot, I can't think of his name. Ryan Dowd, are you familiar with him? He's, he's in, he, out of Chicago. Um, but he puts on a really good training for, you know, for li-, specifically for library. And he has a webinar that, um, is really helpful. And, and I think, I think really, um, you know, he has some really practical advice. Um, he, he actually, um, is, he's been the director of a homeless shelter in Chicago for, um, I'm not sure how many years, but a long time. And so he has some really practical advice, you know, to help, you know, with people experiencing homelessness or, you know, mental health issues or, or what have you. And I, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of his advice, you know, really has a lot to do with just kindness, you know, being, being kind to everybody. And, um, and that's something that I try to instill with staff, that, you know, we, you know, we want to be a welcoming environment for everybody. I think that that's important. And just, you know, people knowing, you know, a lot of times if you put out that good faith, you know, ahead of time, you know, it's gonna pay dividends. When you do ha-, when you do have to, you know, you might have to call somebody if they're doing something they're not supposed to do. But you've, if you've built up that goodwill already, if, if, um, you know that person by name, uh, they're gonna be much more likely to, um, comply when, with your requests. Um, but, you know, it helps to sort of build up that goodwill ahead of time. So that way, you know, when we do have to say, oh, you know, we, you know, we really don't allow that in the library, it's gonna be much less, um, you know, they're gonna be much more compliant and say, oh, yeah, sure, you know, because they know your name and you know their name. And it's just, um, those relationships, I think, go a long way, for sure. So.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What is your vision of a public library? What is your vision of a public library's purpose and role in society?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, you know, I think, I think, you know, it has, um, you know, you know, several purposes. But, you know, I would say if, if we had just sort of one purpose, if you had to say, okay, this is why we're here. Uh, you know, one thing I would think of is, I would, I would say literacy. Um, but it doesn't necessarily just mean, you know, literacy in terms of reading. Uh, there's many different kinds of literacy. There's, there's digital literacy, you know, so, you know, helping folks, you know, how, how to navigate a computer. Uh, you know, maybe, maybe they haven't applied for a job since it's gone online. So helping people with that sort of thing. Uh, helping people, um, discern, you know, what's, what's a legitimate resource. Uh, you know, one example, maybe somebody, somebody's applying for financial aid for college, but they, they're clicked on a website that's actually a scam. Uh, so just kind of helping people with that sort of literacy as well. And of course, uh, promoting literacy, um, you know, in the, in the, um, traditional sense we think of. So, you know, promoting- traditional sense we think of. So, you know, promoting reading, uh, you know, for all ages, you know, talking about lifelong learning, you know, and, you know, especially, you know, when, when we were able to, uh, you know, help kids at, at the youngest age, you know, from baby, you know, all the way up. I think that that's a real important mission for the library as well. Uh, so just, you know, promoting that, that lifelong learning, I think is key. Uh, you know, and it might be something along the lines of, you know, helping people. You know, we have some like online learning platforms like, uh, linda.com for example. Uh, so helping people be able to increase their skill set, you know, and, and realize that, you know, they can, they can increase that level and, you know, maybe get a better job or that sort of thing. So, you know, definitely, we do have the tools available where people can, you know, climb that learning ladder and, you know, maybe increase their job skills. So it's, it's a lot of different things. Maybe they want to open a business. You know, we have some great resources that, that are unique to the library that you can't find anywhere else. A lot of demographic resources. So in a way, that's, that's another aspect of literacy as well, because they're, they're learning how to navigate that sort of information and, you know, what does that mean? And how can they apply it to bettering themselves? So I guess literacy, but in the same regard, you know, allowing the opportunity for people to, you know, pro- providing that space and resources for people to, um, better themselves. Um, in any way, whatever that looks like for the individual. But I also think there, there should be an aspect of, um, fun in the library and creativity. Um, you know, I'm really a big fan of, you know, we talk about, you know, you think of the library as like a, um, you know, it used to be, you went to the library and you consumed information. Like here's some information, here's, here's a book, here's a DVD. Um, but I really like the idea of a library as a place where you can go to create your own content. You know, whatever that looks like, whether it's digitally, uh, maybe a writer's group, uh, maybe, you know, what, whatever that looks like, whatever that creativity looks like, you know, it could be a writer's group, it could be an improv group. Um, could be anything that, that, where creativity happens. It's, I think, I think that's a real fun niche for libraries too. So there's the learning, but there's also that other side of learning, that creative side that I enjoy as well. You're welcome.
Do you have any questions for us, or would you like to bring up anything that we didn't get to in the questions?
Uh, sure. Um, so as far as y'all, y'all, all your, um, you know, collective uh, thinking, you know, what, what's the most important, uh, you know, skills and qualities you're looking for in the next director?
I mean, I think that the biggest thing is someone who's going to be able to bring together the staff to, you know, kind of like you've said, really engage with the community and everything like that, to motivate everybody to, you know, get people into the library and to get them, you know, any services that they need and all the information that they could possibly want.
That's cool.
You know, and like you said, uh, you know, we, we do a lot of workforce development and things like that. And so, you know, that's high on my list, uh, you know, just as one person. Um, but yeah, just making a cohesive team to serve the community.
Nice. Very good. I think that's really, you know, one of my strengths is really that, you know, creating that shared vision, that common purpose. And, you know, we can have fun and, and, and still, um, you know, definitely we can, you know, if we, we have that sense of fun, that sense of joy, our customers are going to see that. It's, it's going to translate into how we serve our customers. And I think that that's, that's key. And, you know, I think we're more, um, creative, we're more innovative when we do feel like we're enjoying going into work. You know, we're with our friends and, you know, we're with our coworkers more than we're with our friends and family, a lot of us. So we might as well have fun while we're there. We might as well take the opportunity to, you know, because I, you know, I think libraries have a, you know, a real, I mean, we really make a difference in the community. I mean, it's, it's huge. Um, and, and I think, you know, for me, you know, folks who might not use the library, but, you know, they need to hear those stories too. You know, about what we, what we do and how we affect people's lives. Because I, you know, if you haven't been to a library in 25, 30 years, you might not realize the fantastic things we do with, you know, you know, helping folks get a job. Um, help, help them with those skills. And people are probably have no idea the, the services and resources that we offer. So I'm definitely excited about promoting that to, to the community for sure. Um, you know, as far as, you know, myself, uh, you know, something I might, you might want to know is I'm, you know, I'm pretty good at, um, like I do, I do enjoy like public speaking, you know, it's something that I, I do, I do enjoy doing. And I think that that's, that's a good skill to have when you're, you know, wanting to, uh, go out and talk to people. So that's something I, I would like to share.
Well, I think, and you had touched on this, um, I think earlier, we are looking, you know, for somebody who does enjoy doing that and being a part of the community. And like you said, a leader in the community, um, our past director was, and that's something that she was really great at. And um, I think, I know me, something I admired about her. So that's a important piece of it for us as well.
Oh, that's great. Yeah. There's definitely plenty of, um, organizations and stuff to be a part of in, in this area. So I think that's awesome. Very cool.
Did you have any other questions for us or?
I, I did have one question.
Sure.
Okay. So let me ask you this. So what is, what's your favorite part about living in Carson City? If you could name one thing, if you could say, okay, this is why I live here, what would you say?
The wildlife I see on my dog walks.
What do you see?
You really want to know? Coyotes.
Oh.
Rabbits, bears, chipmunks, squirrels, a mountain lion once.
Whoa.
Two, um, lynxes.
Wow. That's pretty amazing.
Oh yeah, I forgot about the, the city deer who are not afraid of anything.
Yeah.
Really?
Uh, I like that. We are a small town in a lot of ways, but then it's not so small that, uh, you know, we feel, I feel like I'm in the middle of nowhere. Um, and, you know, just there is a lot in our community that happens outdoors is, if you're into the outdoors, this is definitely a place to live too.
Nice. You ever trade your Joes, don't you?
We do.
So I'll echo what Amanda said to a, a very large extent. Um, I was born and raised in Vegas and, you know, when I came up here, it was a very small town to me. And now it's, I couldn't imagine leaving. Uh, it's, I absolutely love Carson City. Um, you know, the, having everything outdoors readily available within, you know, an hour's drive, you can get to Tahoe, you can get, you know, just about anywhere to, you know, hike and to camp and things like that. Um, that's, that's what I love about it is that it's, it's the, it still feels like a small town to me, you know, even though we're the third largest, uh, area in the state.
Oh nice.
Um, but yeah, that's, that's what I like.
I would echo that small town feeling. Um, I came from a small town. Um, and I, I really love that this is a small town as far as area, um, traffic. And it's really neat that you can live in this town and you can meet the mayor on the street. You can see the governor, you know, you, you can get to know the official people in your town, in your state. Um, and it, but it also offers lots of really good restaurants. Um, all of the outdoor activities that they've all mentioned. So you don't have to go very far to get the things that big cities offer. The few that are worth going to see.
Best of both worlds. Nice.
They say everything.
Okay, we, we have the mind.
It's a little, I don't know. I, I moved around all the time as a kid. I lived in bigger cities and all over the globe. And when I finally was old enough to decide where I wanted to live, I was here and I just stayed here. And like I've, I've come to really enjoy being here and I've left a few times uh, for job reasons, right? But I've always came back. So it's just, it's where my family is. It's what I like. I, I love it here.
But we have Tahoe.
Almost like an ocean.
My husband and I go to the ACES games, which is the farm team for the Diamondbacks.
Oh, cool.
And, uh, U N R football games, we have season tickets. Yes. And, uh, plenty of shows. If you want to go to Tahoe Arena to look, to go to shows, we go to several of those. I shamed him into it. He's a workaholic. There, there's plenty of stuff to do. And we are not sportsmen at all. So walking and race walking is what we do. But there's a lot of BLM land and undeveloped land, which is why we see all those animals.
Oh wow.
And we love it.
That's awesome.
We also have an excellent musical theater company here in town who, who draw people from the Bay Area to come and see the shows they put on.
That's really cool. I don't have any more questions.
All right. Well, excellent. Thank you very much for taking the time to come in and interview. And we look forward to, uh, hopefully seeing you tonight at the, the mixer and.
Indeed.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for inviting me. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Um, with that, we'll go ahead and, uh, do you guys want to do a 10 minute recess? Okay. So we'll take a 10 minute recess, um, before we come back to continue the meeting. Something like that. Um, at this time, we're not going to make a decision on this. Uh, we are going to wait until the following meeting.
Yes. Before you, uh, continue on with the meeting, did you state, state that we're back on the record?
Oh, uh, yes. So we, uh, are now reconvened officially. Um, and as I said, everybody's taken a moment to get their notes together. Um, as I said, we're not going to, uh, make a decision on this now, but we will be waiting until the following meeting, which is a week from today in this room at five o'clock. Um, yeah. Does any, uh, do any of the board members have any discussion? Um, not about the candidates, but about the process or anything that they want to go over at this time? Okay. In that case, I believe we'll move on to item four, public comment. If any members of the public wish to address the library board of trustees, now would be the time. Seeing none forthcoming, we'll move on to item five, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.